May I have the signature of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. Please look to the right to select that all board members are present. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on their agenda? Thank you. Picking up a motion for the approval of minutes as contained in your backup. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Rihanna Fulton Assistant Principal effective August 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Michael Giacchetti Assistant Principal effective August 25th, 2018.
So moved. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So I'll be explaining further about Mrs. Fulton, but Mr. Giacchetti has successfully obtained a principalship in the ISOP school district at the elementary center, so we are really optimistic right now to work with him.
You are.
So we wish him well. May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Louis Stolletto Interim Assistant Principal at a high school effective September 1st, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mrs. Stolletto, too, has obtained a different position in another school district in that county in his instructional field of mathematics. And of course, we always tell our APs that it's expected that, you know, they obtain something bigger and better after three to five years, but I have to do a better job of making sure they all don't go at the same time.
But we wish him well.
But we wish him well as well. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Rihanna Fulton, Director of Technology, effective August 20th, 2018 to August 19th, 2022.
So moved. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And we're really excited to welcome Mrs. Fulton in a different capacity. I think we're all blown away by the level of expertise she had in both information and instructional technology and something she has done in previous careers as well as she will look at having to still work at that point. May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Karen Westchamp, Business, effective July 9th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And we're really excited to welcome Mrs. Fulton in a different capacity. I think we're all blown away by the level of expertise she had in both information and instructional technology and something she has done in previous careers as well as she will look at having to still work at that point. May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Karen Westchamp, Business, effective July 9th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Child Rehearing Leave of Absence for Virginia Mullins Counseling, effective August 29th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Erin Mead, Special Education, effective August 29th, 2018 to August 28th, 2021.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I know. Now we'll introduce you to someone else. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Amanda Felix, Special Education, effective August 29th, 2018 to August 28th, 2022.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Marissa Semenetti Bellani, Special Education, effective August 29th, 2018 to August 28th, 2022.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Marissa Semenetti Bellani, Special Education, effective August 29th, 2018 to August 28th, 2022.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Rebecca Burleson, Special Education, effective August 29th, 2018 to August 28th, 2022.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. Congratulations to all of you. Good luck.
May I have a motion for the approval of regular substitute Pamela Doubler Reading, effective August 29th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Megan Johnston, Special Education, effective August 29th. This is a regular substitute appointment. August 29th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So moved. Your full discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome to all of you. May I have a motion for the approval of a leave of absence pursuant to FENLA for Anita Diaz, Senior Account Clerk, effective July 5th through September 26th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Tracy Allen, Part-Time Food Service Worker, effective August 27th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of William Delaney III, custodian of Order One, effective August 16th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Sue Jordan, Part-Time Food Service Worker, effective August 27th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Catherine Gray, Lord Tykis, effective August 21st, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Mark Honamico, Custodian of Order One, effective August 16th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Michael Beckerman, Macon Mechanic Four, effective August 31st, 2018.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute custodians as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the alternative school instructors for the 2018-19 school year as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the curriculum writers for the summer 2018 as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion?
I have just a question. Has the curriculum been completed? Has the writing done?
Some of these have been completed and some of them will be listed on board.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Middle School Summer Academy staff as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Instructional Swim and Family Swim Program Supervisors and Life Guard for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the full 2018 high school coaches as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the full 2018 middle school coaches as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the winter high school coaches for 2018-19 as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the spring 2018 high school coaches as listed in your backup.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teaching assistants as listed in your backup.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. For the update, Dr. Lou.
So good evening. During the summer, we have hosted a number of support programs. We had the summer investigations, which is a four-day, four-week program where I identify children entering first through fifth grade, receive instruction in literacy and math for two hours daily. We had 85 students who enjoyed this interdisciplinary approach. They integrated all the content areas based on various themes throughout the summer. The themes included American the Beautiful, Under Deceit, Traveling the World and Celebrating Disances, and Superheroes, Fairy Tales, and Fictional Stories. It was a great way to implement that program. It's had a lot of fun and they learned a lot and did very, very well. Summer Academy is a four-day, two-week program where students meet for 90 minutes daily in math and/or literacy. The program is designed to help close any of the learning gaps for students who may be struggling, students entering sixth through sixth eighth grade. And we've had 33 students participate in the literacy and 45 students who participate in math. And now we are just wrapping up our summer school and we just review courses. For summer school, we offered almost 10, Global Studies, Algebra One, Geometry, Earth Science, and Biology, and 48 students enrolled. In our region, we review courses for Global Studies, Algebra One and Two, Geometry, Earth Science, Living Environment, and Chemistry with an enrollment of 73 students. So the region's examinations are going to be administered tomorrow and Friday. I hope you'll be students love that. And I will be doing a review of the program and their effectiveness, and we'll also allow their student successes and then present that to the Board at a future date so that we, as we always for our program reviews. And then, of course, we are wrapping up our curriculum writing projects. We're preparing for meeting-to-workshops, superintendent's conference days, which also will include that ongoing safety, attitude training, sensitivity training, and stuff like that. And of course, getting our schools ready for our students to look at more fastest school year, which is just around this point.
Thank you, Dr. Lou. And Mr. Brady will discuss the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Okay, the Finance Committee met August 14th, 2018, in the District Conference Room. Committee members present were myself, Mr. McGinnis, and Mrs. Mullin. Other board members in attendance were Amber Riera Rosa, Richard Antonello, and Kevin O'Connor. Administrator's present were Bernadette Burns and Alisa Pilati, and we also had our purchasing agent, Rob Nortila, and now Pat Plompton, our internal claims order examiner. Purpose of the meeting, as always, is to review the warrants for the month and discussion of pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting was called to order at 7:30 p.m. Under the Treasurers' Report, school district funds for June 2018 were presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll summary report for June 2018 was presented and accepted by the committee. Financial statements for May 2018 were presented and accepted by the committee. We have the Internal Claims Audit Report for May and June 2018. They were presented and accepted by the committee. The system manager audit trail for 5/3118 through 6/3018 and again for 7/118 through 7/3118 were also presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll certification for 6/118, 6/1518, 6/2218, 6/2918, 6/3018, 7/1318, and 7/2718 were presented and accepted by the committee. The review of the warrants, Finance Committee received the warrants, and we had reviewed board agenda finance items. We'll have the approval of budget transfers. They were presented and accepted by the committee for submission to the board tonight. We had approval of donations for Manituck A-hole USA, where I miss call, approval of surplus food services, excess of old equipment at the high school, Udon Road and Open Up Elementary. Under the high school, we have excess of old library books. Bee Street also had old library books as well as Udon Road, Manituck, Open Up, and Paul J. Blue. With the approval of 2017-2018 Sedco contract for the alternatives for children, approval of contracts for the Integra Consulting for 2018-2019, which is the final ES-POSIS contract for the Cooperative Educational Services for 2017-18. With the approval of the 2018-19 special education contracts for Babylon Union Free School District, Workfield Center for Children, Home Academy Free School District of the Summer, Lauren Hirschberger, MD, ISOP Tutoring, Long Island Developing Consulting Incorporated, Little Angels Center Incorporated, and the Nysaw Pink Wolf Suffolk Chapter, Edward M. Petrowski, he is a, I guess, a doctor of psychology. We also have approval of 2018-19 cafeteria bids for bagels, bread, commodity foods, and other commodities. And the list goes on. All the bids were presented to the committee and accepted. Approval of resolutions, we have increase of the 2017-2018 budget, the tax levy, the income eligibility guidelines for free and reduced-priced meals, of free milk, and discussion items were the tan and ban results. Alisa Pilati informed the committee that the interest rates for the tan for 2018-19 taxes and the ban, B-A-N, excuse me, ban, 2018 came in better than expected. The rate for the tan is at 1.7, a little over 1.7 percent, and the rate for the ban is at 1.8 percent. The meeting was adjourned at 7:40 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. And Mr. O'Connor might not know, but he was going to discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Good evening, everybody. Building, Grounds Committee members, yesterday, August 14th, that district office. Committee members present were myself, Mr. Brady, and Miss Mahalik. Board members in attendance were Mrs. Roraosa, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. Antonello. Administrator's present were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Devasi, and Mrs. Pilati. Others in attendance were representatives from BBS and SCC Construction. They were present to discuss the district bond work. And the meeting was called to order at 7:45 p.m. First on the agenda was an update to the committee on the bond work. At the last board meeting, I reported Phase II B of the bond was completed except for some final punch list items. All punch list items now have been completed with the exception of some Lexan window replacements and screen installations at T20 School. Work on the brick wall in front of the high school outside of the auditorium has uncovered a major support beam that has rusted and rotted significantly and needs replacement. This is actually an original beam from construction in 1957. This replacement is not included in the original wallwork, but as happens with construction when walls are opened up, additional work is sometimes required and unavoidable. Cost of this beam and the scope of the additional work is being priced and will result in a longer work job on this wall. As a result, work will not be completed by the first day of school. Scaffolding will be up the first day of school, but the committee has instructed our contractors that student and staff safety is our top priority, and we were assured that area will be safe and the job will not interfere with the coming and going of students and staff. This work does not interfere with the front door of the high school. However, the doors by the auditorium may not be accessible at times. Next, the committee requested an update on the cost of bond work to date for the next BNG meeting. Next, we discussed district-wide security vestibles. Plans for the four elementary schools and the two middle schools have previously been approved by the committee, and these are in the process of being submitted to SEV for approval. The committee was informed that anticipated approvals should be around October. Bidding will immediately follow with anticipated awards by November. Lead time on materials will dictate when construction will commence, with anticipated construction commencing around February 2019, with anticipated completion on four of the six buildings, the security vestibles, by late spring 2019. These anticipated dates will all subject to change due to a variety of issues that may arise beyond our control, such as SEV approval, weather issues, etc. The vestibule additions at Manituck and Baloo, due to the nature of the required construction at those buildings, are not likely to begin while school is in session, and thus, the anticipated start date on these jobs will be in the summer of 2019. Next, the committee was presented with a number of options for the high school front door security vestibule, along with the new high school front facade with signage on it. These options are under review by the committee with anticipation. The committee will select the vestibule layout and the facade plans at an upcoming BNG meeting. I will say the committee was very impressed by the front options and the new look, and I think everyone too would rather like to go with the same. Next on the agenda was an update on various permit requests for use of district properties, and these were reviewed by the committee. Lastly, the South Shore Children's Center, one of our tenants at Westbrook, requested a lease amendment to allow subleasing should the tenant's enrollment drop in coming years. This was not approved. However, a takeback of the additional rooms the tenant has rented would be considered if the tenant's enrollment dropped, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And now making her West Ice with David Lou. Mrs. Pilati will discuss financial matters and business affairs.
The Treasurers' Report for the month of June 2018 had a beginning balance at May 31st of $54,673,379.53, and we ended the month at June 30th with a balance of $30,053,132.82. May I please have a motion for the approval of budget transfers number 3520 through 3529 for the general fund and number 3526 for the capital fund.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a approval for the motion, I'm sorry, for the resolution of the donations, the acceptance of donations for Manituck as listed on the agenda?
So moved. Good. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a approval for the, I'm sorry, may I have a motion for the approval of surplus items that include the library books and, as named, food service equipment?
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a resolution to increase the 2017-18 budget?
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution for the acceptance of the tax levy to establish a tax levy for 2018-19.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a resolution for the income eligibility guidelines for free and reduced-priced meals or free milk for 2018-19 school year.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Sedco agreement for 2017-18 for alternatives for children?
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of contract for our final POSIS Cooperative Educational Services for 1718 as well as the Integra Consulting Computer Services for 2018-19.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of 2018-19 special education contracts as listed on the agenda?
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the following Long Island School Food Nutrition Directors Association Cooperative Bids for 2018-19 as listed on the agenda?
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of stipulation settlement and release student aid in your backup? So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the WIDA lease agreement? Can you do the backup? So moved. Second. Discussion? This is a lease for WIDA. That's the West Ice Teachers Association. They rented an office, a room, which they use as an office in Westbrook, and it's basically the same terms as last year with 3% escalation. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like a motion to table the South Shore Children's Center lease agreement discussion. So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Burns?
Okay, so just to remind everyone, our first day of school for our teachers is Wednesday, August 29th. We have a full day planned on both the 29th and the 30th for our staff. We have a keynote speaker, Todd Whitaker, who will be reminding us of the most important things in life or not things, who we're very excited to be sharing that with all of our staff who's here, regardless of the area of responsibility, so, or welcoming them back. I received notification yesterday that the results of the grade 3-8 testing have been delayed and we probably will not see that until later in September. That is a function of the state going from three days of testing to two days, so in order to calibrate the results appropriately and make sure since, you know, we're calculating growth for children that they're taking a special look at everything that they're doing at this point. So we So we will not expect to see that until sometime this week in September. I think we'll be making an announcement to everybody at some time as they do. And finally, I would like to thank Paul J. Blue for the hospitality this summer. It was very comfortable, I think, to be in here. It was air conditioned, which if you don't have that luxury, you know, as Mr. O'Connor pointed out, we have a lot of work going on throughout the district and the high school and our two middle schools and that, et cetera. So we thank Paul J. Blue for it.
All right. I was wishing to share whatever's on their mind. Ms. Cassia?
I don't think it's really necessary for us to go into the reason why we want an additional section for the upcoming 4th grade classes at Manituck. We've been through that, but I do have some questions for you. Last month, I'd like to know why the meeting minutes were cut short. We had a very open, candid conversation at the end of the meeting, and we felt as parents you were listening to us, and we'd like to know why that was scratched from the record.
So, they have it been scratched from the record. What, the general procedure is that we don't post the minutes until after we've approved them following meeting, which is typically at the planning session at the end of the month. And of course, we don't have a planning session in July, so we've approved them tonight. Where this thing got confused, and I don't really know why, is because the minutes from the first meeting, which was the reorg meeting, got posted. So the minutes from the actual meeting, the one which we spoke at, weren't posted at all. None of that is up yet. They will be posted.
You also say that if you open up an additional section at Manituck, you may have to do the same at other schools as well. As educated women and taxpayers, we know that's not the case. We all gave you, handed you the evidence you need or needed to open up a new section, and this was never about the numbers, which we specifically stated from the beginning. Our children in these classes need more attention. Why won't you do what is fair for our children? You have the power to change things, so why won't you?
So, Mrs. Cassia, one of the things, we've been spending a lot of time looking at the work and the accomplishments of the children over the course of the last year, and in fact, the students at Manituck, and in particular, the students in the 3rd grade at Manituck, have done quite well, actually. We've seen some nice growth, the feedback that we've gotten, we've looked at the report cards, we've looked at writing samples, we've looked at the results of some of the benchmarking and other testing that's been done, and there's nothing to indicate that regardless of class size, the students have in any way, shape, or form experienced any kind of regression in their learning. So it really doesn't justify adding another section on the basis of that class size.
Okay, so you are basically saying that you don't believe us as parents of all the things that we said about the anxieties and everything that went on?
I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that despite anything that any individual or group of children may be experiencing, it has not affected their ability to learn and to be successful and to achieve. And we will continue to support them as we did last year, where we put a full-time social worker in the building, and we have other support staff there, and we're going to be approaching other programs in the building to continue to get the support.
What programs?
We have a number of programs that we are rolling out in the area of social support, mindfulness. Dr. Wu, you want to?
Yeah, yes, actually, yeah, we're, we have been piloting mindfulness off, you know, I think, when we know that in from new school building to school building, but we, that has been done through the support of the wellness committee and this is my commitment, so we're bringing in trainers. We've been doing that for past few years, but on Super Ten Conference Day, we're starting to, we will have all of our 3 to 5 teachers trained, we will specifically have them in the classrooms. We are also updating our health curriculum, which has a mental health component to it. That's, that is a new piece to that, and that's how the school will begin, we'll be using that cross mark. So that is a new piece of curriculum as well.
And, you know, as Mrs. Burns stated, we have been, you know, first year, last year was the first year with our social workers, but we're really looking about, we're kind of bringing, we look at all the different programs that are going on, and we can see what really works within our own community, and so that our social workers are putting that together with our intervention specialists, who will be overseeing that.
Okay, so a social worker, just from the last meeting, I was told that only, I think, five children from the 3rd grade, you mean, see the social workers?
Yes, we, from the, from the, not the last meeting, but the previous meeting, so looking to see who have been identified as students who require counseling under IMP or 504, there were five students. We naturally have students go when there are divorced parents, to buddy, things like that, they're not identified, that's a very fluid, kids come in and out there. That grievance counseling, pure mediation, yes, they go see the social worker there, that's the role of the social worker as well.
So, Ms. Burns, you said, I believe it was two meetings ago then, that, no, okay, yeah, two meetings ago, that if you could do things over, you would. At the last meeting, you all stated, or many of you stated, that you did not know why there were three sections for 3rd grade at Manituck. We brought a lot of information to you, and we have not gotten any responses other than we're looking at numbers. It's an ongoing process. So we feel that you really weren't listening to us. We thought you were at the last meeting, but after the emails that we received, we feel like you weren't, and there wasn't discussion. That's what, that's what the letter says.
Mrs. Cassia, my staff has done an incredible amount of work, the teachers, the principal, and Dr. Wu, to address every single thing that you brought to our attention, and we have come up with the same result. As of this time, because there is nothing to indicate at this time, at this moment, that we should add another section to 4th grade at Manituck. We've looked, we've done an analysis of the data, we've looked at the children's report cards, we've revisited our staffing in a number of different areas, we've had many, many conversations with staff members, and there at this time, there's nothing to indicate that we need to make a change.
Okay, so everyone is in agreeance that, in agreement that there do not need an additional section, everyone?
Well, ultimately, I made the recommendation to the Board of Ed, so ultimately, my recommendation at this point in time is that an additional section is not necessary.
Right, but you said that you've spoken with and had conversations, so everyone agrees with that?
That is correct. Yes, well, that, ultimately, I own it.
Well, our children have been changed, so they're the same students as last year, and we're nervous about how to help them reduce their anxieties and the workload, and I don't believe staff development, being an educator, if I had, and I've had many classes in the past, maybe or large classes, and no matter how much staff development that is given, I still am challenged with those, you know, the same, well, I still have the same challenges in that classroom. I mean, maybe there's one or two things, you know, that I'll be able to use in my classroom, but you cannot reach all of it all.
I have to respectfully disagree with that. Again, as a former elementary teacher, I think that that's something we expect our teachers to do, I think as educators ourselves, that's we put that on ourselves to do that, you know, and when you say about, you know, looking at the work we're doing, the data that, you know, we receive from the teachers were very thorough. They gave us from fall, winter, and spring, vocabulary, reading comprehension, oral reading fluency, math concepts, you know, they had concepts and applications, we looked at the fondest stuff, they gave us from fall, winter, and spring. We looked back on second grade to see about some of the before starts, like, we ran all their report cards, the children performed very well.
And they all made one year's progress?
They most made more than one year. Most made more, and I know that was a comment, we were saying, well, kids, we know, when we look at them to see where they were in fondest stuff now, which I find a really great measure, because it gives the teachers the opportunity to really delve into the learning behaviors of the students, and they, and so the teacher can then know what they need to work with them. So at the end of the year, we only had, you know, two students who were reading below grade level out of the entire 3rd grade, which is, I mean, and this is reported by the teachers, and from their work, and their, their plans are reviewed by the principal, and their diet reading plans, or their strategy rules. So, no, I'm just saying, so that when I'm looking at that, so where did they come in? And what, yes, a lot of kids came in above grade level, but they stayed above grade level when they left. So I think, you know, when you're looking at that, you want to make at least a year's growth, you know, obviously, learning is not exponential, so, you know, making that year's growth is important, but we don't want the student to regress, and that's why I think we need to keep these, we need to see children regress.
I know the data is really important, but for me, the data and the grades aren't as important as the way my child feels, and the way my child is acting, or acting out, or withdrawn, but I would like to know, what are we going to do if this, if we start 4th grade and it seems to be the same issues again? What do we do as parents?
Well, I think, first of all, we need to work cooperatively to address each of the individual behaviors, and if there are things that we need to, and one of the things we've been exploring is having, going back to that parent academy model, so that we provide support to the parents, to provide support to the kids, and we are all on the same page. Mrs. Cassia, as an educator, you know, it's really confusing for children if there's one set of expectations in the classroom and they're different at home as far as behavior goes. So we try to work together.
What do you mean by that?
I, so that, I guess, occasionally might not be, from the perspective of, if children are struggling with behavior, typically, if the teacher and the parent are on the same page, if homework is important, you know, or whether homework is reading or any other positive activity, and it's valued appropriately, and there's conversation about that, and the same reinforcement is made with the child on a regular basis, then I think that that child will be successful in that regard. If it's something, I'm gonna, making up something as simple as please and thank you, and that's ringing towards with a child consistently, from home to school, I, I think for the most part, kids will respond to that.
So you'll be setting out parent academy workshops for the parents?
That is something that we have been looking at, yes, in the area of social media, and if you feel that something in the area of behavior management is valuable, that's certainly something we can put in place as well.
Specifically, too, the mindfulness, because we're seeing, we're seeing many children that apply anxiety coming in to school. It's not just, you know, 3rd grade, we see that across the board, and across many districts as well, across the nation. So one of the things that we really might do is have, you know, children, and we'd all benefit, I mean, just be in the moment, you know, we could all use this.
I know, I use it in my classes, so I may use it at home with my son.
So there are going to be, great, well, having that, those type of parent academies as well to help support, but I, you know, that's one of the things when there are different expectations, we're saying about some things that might be acceptable at home, might be different as in school, because those, I think, students now, when they start to get in 3rd grade, you know, with brain research, right, the, the brain's starting to change, more abstract thinking, some kids are there, some kids aren't there, 3rd grade typically is at grade level, you know, that we really say, our 2nd grade teachers say, you gotta get them ready for 4th grade, because you know that's a different ballgame, and, you know, maybe it really shouldn't be, but that's the reality of it, where we have to have those higher order thinking, more abstract skills, the fractions usually are a little bit of anxiety building as well, so that's when we're saying about, that, you know, it's a different, it's a different mindset about coming in, working with the people, those students, and knowing, you know, some kids are moving faster than others, it's like the 1st grade, you see the big differences, you also see the 3rd grade.
Well, I teach kindergarten, and I also taught 3rd grade, and I think 3rd grade honestly is one of the most challenging grades. It is.
I'm working with you.
That is why we're, you know, the fact that there wasn't a war when there shouldn't be war classes, and I think, you know, we're concerned as parents that we might see the same anxiety and the same level next year, and we, you know, opened our hearts, I've shared my experiences, it's on public record now about my son, you know, and that.
Do you think the workshops for parents might help, because in the past, we, the last, ones last year were very well attended, the two that we had done previous to that, when we were trying to, before, and that was a number of years ago, they weren't really well attended, but do you think this is?
Yeah, I went to those, yeah.
Yeah, so do you think it would be something that would be well received?
I, I think, yeah, depending on the topic.
Okay.
Depending on my own topic.
October 17th and 18th, there's a, yeah.
What is it?
October 17th and 18th.
Is, oh, do you know what it's on, or?
Yeah, mindfulness.
Oh, it's on mindfulness?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Cassia, if anyone, if you, if there's a topic that you feel is worthy, please feel free to, you know, suggest that.
Okay.
What programs for students? Typically, that's how we end up.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to add something to this special, because we and I have spoken like last week, and I have to say that you all moved to the presentation of how you helped the school here, and, you know, I really took the summer and to look at a lot of the information that you had, or some of the things that I've heard come from you, speak to Mrs. Morrison, speak to some of the teachers, and, you know, hear what the teachers had to say about their experience in the classroom, you know, overall, I think that, you know, my, my expectation of us, you know, past the superintendent and Mrs. Morrison, is to be present in those classrooms come September, and have eyes on those groups of children, and let's get in there and see, and through observation of, of, you know, an outside observation of what's going on, what the dynamic might be, so that the resources that Dr. Morrison was talking about, that we can really target and find out, too. So while, no, I, we can't have another section, I think that it's all on our radar, that we need to be, you know, very proactive about what's going on at that grade level.
Mrs. Cassia's been wonderful with, you know, helping and, you know, communication throughout the year, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, I mean, there's no issue with that, it was just that we feel that we...
I, I, I don't want you to be here thinking that we didn't hear you. We did hear you, and there are a lot of things that have to go into the decision-making process in terms of class sizes, and, you know, adding that section. You know, you opened up by saying you don't really need to work with the rest of the school, you should just open it, that there's, there's, no...
Fortunately, we can't, we can't.
And so, and that's not what makes a decision, because if I could have grabbed onto any single thing to give you that other section, I would, thank you, but, again, there is this big picture that...
We, we do read your emails, so, I mean, we all get them.
You really let him answer though.
Even, even the last one that we got, there was a late one that came in, I mean, right up to the moment, we read these things, and we discuss these things all the time, so I...
I guess we feel like we're not upset, because it felt like we weren't.
Yeah, and I, and I saw that in the responses, too, I could see, I could see the frustration.
Like last, last meeting, you know, we all talked, and I, we felt like you heard us, and then from the, you know, I guess, maybe we can't put anything, everything in writing, or whatever, we don't get responses, or we have to ask the question to get a response, so we felt like, you know, that we weren't being heard, and we just, we just want, we want a positive 4th grade experience, that's all any of us.
And I think that we all believe that.
And I, I promise you, we, we have listened to everything you've said, we've read everything you've written, we've considered it, we've talked about it, we've asked the administration a lot of questions on it, on multiple occasions, so, you know, at this, and although we're not agreeing at this point to the thing you specifically asked for, as Mrs. Morrison said, as Mrs. Burns and Dr. Wu said, there are many other things that we are doing to try to help the situation go forward, so...
And I'm not saying, like, the rest of West Side will do.
So you don't like my emails?
No.
I don't like these.
This is not, this is not very...
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Latuga. All right, Mrs. Latuga, this is, this is, what do you think of my emails?
I don't know, I'm gonna tell you what I think of your emails. How did you know? So, no, I'm just, I'm very happy with what we just discussed, and the thing about the emails is, you know, I wrote something with, you know, we were getting email responses, we were sending out, like, our concerns and so forth, but we're just getting the redundant, like I said, the scripted response of thanks for your letter, and the respect that you and other parents have shared, please press assure that we were... Well, the first, this is from June 7th, after that, or July 3rd, after that Board of Ed meeting, you know, that you were looking into, into and paying attention and having very many conversations on the topic. And then the most recent email was, you know, after I thought we had that open communication, the most recent email was, as the board and administration have said, we continue to monitor the enrollment numbers for the entire district at least until class begins. This was just only a few days ago, okay? As there have been no significant changes to date, we have not made any changes, but we'll continue to monitor the situation, all right? So that's what I was a little bit dissatisfied with. But now here that we're communicating, this is what, if we would have gotten that in email, if I would have gotten what you discussed, okay?
Talk about all of that.
I mean, if you could just generalize it, you know, this is just basically, I mean, you've been giving us copying and pasting, copying and...
So I believe I, I believe I sent that from my phone in an airport.
Okay. All right, so, or you could say, Mrs. Latuga, I will get back to you, you know, some, some of that sort, or, you know, you know, just to, just to respond that you, you acknowledged my email, and then take the time to respond to me in an appropriate manner, address it, address the question before asking.
There wasn't really much else to say.
There wasn't what to say, there was a lot to say now, that I'm very happy with at this point, I am, I'm looking forward for a positive 4th grade experience, not only for my son, but for all the other, you know, 73 students that are going to be, you know, coming in in September. But, you know, that should have been shared with us, if, I, that's what I wanted, I mean, you know? This is, this is the problem, for me, to share what we talked about. I don't know that that can be created in email without a deep, five-year form, you know, it's a fact of course that we're having, because I love it. So, you know... All right, a little bit more than that would have been, would have been...
All right.
And the other thing I want to mention is, I'm just confused about what you said about the Board of Education, the reorganizational minutes.
Mm-hmm.
That's posted, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so that's posted, but then when?
So that, that was not supposed to be posted initially, that would slip through.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't want to take it down then, once it was up, it didn't make sense, but typically, they both took, once the minutes were approved by the board this evening, so within the next couple of days, everything would go up onto the website.
So a couple of years ago, we posted a video before we approved the minutes, and then found error, and we had to revise the minutes.
Okay.
So we made a decision not to post minutes, not to post videos until we had reviewed, approved the minutes. So somehow, I'm really not sure how, the minutes from the reorg meeting, and, you know, nothing of consequence really happens at the, at the reorg meeting, it's a, I get voted president and brand bad emails, apparently.
We, we should start email classes, that's what we have.
Those minutes, those minutes should not have been posted without having, that video should not have been posted without those minutes being approved.
It slipped over my vacation.
Okay, your vacation, airport, I don't, we're all...
So we did not want to take the, the minutes down, because then somebody would've said, oh my God, you're hiding something, you took the minutes down after we questioned it.
And then we're figuring, you're hiding something, because you're not posting them, you know, just like, like, right at 23 minutes or whatever it was, and we're about to get up and speak, and it's like, done.
Now that, no, and as a matter of fact, if you go back and look at various videos over the years, you will see that we posted them unedited regardless of... you will see that we posted them unedited regardless of what gets...
And the whole time, and the whole second meeting is missing, it didn't stop right where the public session is, the whole meeting is missing.
Right, right, so it wasn't cut off, it said, it said there were two separate meetings, and we got the minutes from, the video from one meeting, but not the video from... So that second video, the one you're looking for, will be up, but then the next week, now that we approve.
Because our website manager is on vacation, this piece on vacation, so we're all kind of staggered there.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. And I'm hoping, you know, we're gonna get more parents involved, because I mean, they really should in the meantime.
Absolutely.
They should become more involved, and I just don't know why they don't...
Yeah, in some, in some years, that's been a frustration.
For them, to get them here, I'm not really sure, you know? Do something, persuade them, too. All right, thank you so much.
Some kind of, some kind of raffle.
Sometime, maybe we should do that, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to return to executive session where we discuss personnel, negotiations, and litigation? At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene to public session in here. Um, and of course, members of the public are welcome to join us at that point. Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for joining us, enjoy the rest of the summer.
Congratulations. Yes, congratulations.